We stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Knight?
Yes, Mayor. Your heavenly father, we just thank you for this day, we thank you for this town. And we thank you for the changes being made here, and I thank you, Lord, for a wonderful, happy, and workable spirit to be able to improve rudely with. And thank you for granting us that, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Talk about Paul visitors tonight as well. We get a roll call, please.
Bruce?
Here.
Dave? Michael?
Here.
Mr. Nice?
Yes.
Renee?
Here.
And Trey?
Here.
Alright, everybody take over the packets, approve the minutes from the February meeting.
I approve, I make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Nice?
Second.
Motion by Trey?
Me. Bruce?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Renee?
Yes.
Approve February financial report. Mr. Nice did have a question about the sports betting, that pretty much, I think, is a scratch off ticket. I don't know why it's on that line, I don't like that, but I'm pretty sure that's what that is.
Meaning, we make something off of it, we don't see nothing on it, yeah.
I just didn't know if we'd started a new gimmick. Way to make money.
Have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the financial report.
Motion by Renee? Second?
Yes.
Second by Bruce?
Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Nice?
Yes.
And Trey?
Yes.
Alright, approve bills to be paid. And we do have some amendments of bills to be approved, and she laid out on the side sheet here that they just done today.
As long as we know what's going on, that don't matter.
Well, I'm glad Mr. Happy's getting paid.
Make a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
Motion by Trey? Second by Mr. Nice?
Bruce?
Yes, ma'am.
Michael?
Yes.
And Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Can I ask, you know, I'm not condemning or anything, this left out from Plan Electric, was that done at City Hall?
Uh, yes, that's where he's come done some wiring. We found out the wiring down there, Chief Tows did, that we had a lamp cord running some lights. And luckily, didn't burn, burn City Hall down.
Yeah, that'd start a fire.
He lost, he can explain, he lost the current or something in the evidence room. So he called it just a night.
That's worth five hundred fifteen dollars then.
I came in the next morning, he said, hey, you lost some lights again, he said, let the breaker begin, so I went in and I looked. Breaker went live, so I call a shank that we had, we got a hose. When you broke the ceiling tile, it was our end.
Yep.
And it was held together, it was four lamp wires coming off of the new wire that whoever.
Yeah, whoever, I'd like to know.
Whoever remodeled it, they ran the correct wire, but they left it short over areas, and they placed the lamp wire.
I'll get it later, it's on the old side. Good deal, alright.
Alright, approval of beer permit application for rudely livestock. Background check, I'll come back okay, he's paid his fees. He couldn't be here tonight, but he has Mr. Samantha here. I make a motion to approve. Motion by Michael. Second by Mr. Nice? Roll call?
No.
Trey?
Yes.
Bruce?
No.
So how's that fly?
So we got two, two?
Three.
Three, two.
Okay.
Okay, so it passes.
Sure.
The deal, uh, the next item is personal taxes to be deleted. And what Beth is doing is she went and looked at, these are old businesses that were in business at that time. And this is the personal taxes that, that they never paid. So what MTA says is, pretty much, delete them and just wipe them off. It's three hundred and thirty-four dollars total.
I don't know what that is.
I don't either. Do we have a motion to, uh?
I'll make a motion to delete the tax.
Motion by Renee? I'll second that. Second by Bruce?
Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Nice?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Motion by, the next item is, uh, approve new rental contract for the civic center. We're gonna raise it, uh, I think from two hundred to two fifty, and deposit, refundable deposit will be two fifty.
But the refundable deposit, what is it, what was it before we decided, right, a hundred?
Hundred.
I think it was a hundred, yeah.
It was two hundred. And one of the reasons we've done that is because when it has to be clean, when people don't take care of it, it takes more than a hundred to fix it. To clean it, and then to come over here and do the shampoo, the carpets and all that, it takes more than a hundred. So we've got, we've got to come up, or we're losing money.
The, the only concern I have is that it, it being two fifty, there may be people that don't use it, you know?
Right, right.
I think it needs to be advertised more. I did, I think it needs to be on our page. You know?
My point is, you don't want it to be so high that people are not.
Like for a little boy's birthday party, it's not reality to come up with five hundred dollars.
Right, where they can go.
When you're paying for the party and everything.
They go roller skate or something.
Chuck the cheese. But, in that, in that, saying that, the, on the positive, it cuts some of the riffraff out that's been rough on the building.
They'll be held accountable if that two fifty doesn't get reimbursed, you know, it gets their attention, I think, I would think anyway, so. I think, you know, if they wanted to rent it, it'd be, you know, take extra precautions about trying to take care of things.
And we're more in line with Tiptonville now, if, if this passes.
Right, and now, now, the comment's been made to me this week, because, uh, Tiptonville has seemingly a nicer facility. But here's the deal, the big fat deal is, if we've leveled this down, and we build us a wonderful new civic center over there that we can use all the time, you better believe it's gonna be five hundred dollars renting. So.
And you better believe it's a big civic entity like this one is now.
So I don't know, you know, this, the upkeep, the upkeep on this building, some of it's because it's old and it hasn't been up kept. And some of it, you know, you have to make a decision what you're gonna do, you're gonna go over and build a new and pay for it? Or are you gonna, let's do this one for a while? Now, I'm not for sinking a whole lot more money in this one, I'm not. That's just the way I feel about it.
Neither am I.
I think it's a wonderful historical building, but you can only hold on to history long, only so long, before it ain't worth it anymore. So, I, I wanna fix what needs to be fixed now, but then, if we have to do very much more to it, I'm about doing something different.
I'm weak.
I just was on the page, I'm sorry.
Well, that's true, no, it's true.
I'll make a motion that we, you know, revise the contract.
Motion by Bruce?
Second.
Second by Trey? Roll call?
Michael?
I'm gonna say no.
Mr. Nice?
Yes.
And Mr. Knight?
Yes.
Have y'all, have y'all been up to up there?
No, I'm scared.
It's a whole, it's a whole lot of, it's, it's in pretty rough shape, but it's a whole lot of room over there. I mean, it's a big building.
I've been up there, but it's been years ago.
Is it, is it insulated?
Yeah, it is, it is, but, I mean, it's in pretty rough shape over there. I think that's where most of the, most of this problem comes from. But it could be, it could be nice, you know, lady could be made back into a nice building.
Well, I think it's nice, I mean, I think it's nice.
You got this much room over there too.
But where, I mean, where else though, besides Tiptonville, would anybody have a place to rent? I mean, you know, there's been weddings in here, there's been, so.
Yeah, it could be used.
Go ahead, Bill.
The only problem is, when they redid the HVAC here, all the units are sitting on the second floor. They ran all the ductwork around and come down through this ceiling, so all the ductwork and all the HVACs laying on the floor up there. Plus the ceilings are all caved in, which were tongue and groove wood, and it's laying everywhere. It's absolute mess up there, but it could be cleaned up.
We might put all the money we put in it.
Yep, but what, it could be cleaned up, but you'd have to change HVAC, and that would, and that would be the killer.
We'll move on. Discuss orders concerning animals housed in the city limits. I know Mr. Brad Coggin and my grandfather did, but there are others that supposedly have horses in their backyard, and I think there's chickens running loose, goats. So we've got to, you know, they can have the chickens and all, but they gotta be in a cage. The goats and stuff cannot be, cannot be running loose, so, you know.
I mean, if you want, it's your business if you want farm, but you gotta go to the country to get farm, we're in town.
So, with that said, there, there's the, we've got the, uh, rules for the animals and farms, we gotta decide what we're gonna do, how we're gonna enforce it, and whatnot.
Do we not enforce it like we would the, um, the dog catcher situation?
Well, yes.
You have to go? You have to go?
There's a section on, on that stuff, and I don't even know if it would allow goats in a pen.
It says.
No, I don't like goats, I wouldn't like it to fail with your chickens as well. They gotta be in a pen.
Now, at one point, I thought I read something that said that if you have, well, I'm, let me just read this. This right here.
He's coming out.
Uh, says, but this is talking about running at large, things that are running at large. I mean, sometimes, I realize your dog escapes you, sometimes the goat got off the thing, but I'm, we're talking about, it's not happens once a week, or you need to get some different type stuff, whatever you need to do.
You put him on a log table.
Wow, so, it, it says that the pen or enclosure must be kept clean, when the animals or fowls are kept within their corporate limits, the building, structure, corral, pen, or enclosure. It has to be in sanitary conditions, and it also says, you know, well, it, it talks about, um, food and water, obviously, because it's an animal, you wanna make sure they're taken care of. But it says, here's, here's been some of the problem. Ventilation, or, um, no animal or fowl shall be kept or confined in any place where food, water, shelter, and ventilation are not adequate and sufficient for preservation of health and safety. All animal feed shall be stored and kept in rat-proof and tight, uh, fly-tight building box or reciprocal. Rats will get into that feed. And then you're gonna have poo poo and rats. Next to your new house you just had.
That's where you get your bug cat.
That's when I'm gonna be going to the country, I imagine. But anyway, it, you know, I thought at one time that fowls had to have a, um, overt. Netting a pen, because, I mean, a rooster don't per se fly, but they can jump, I mean, they can whoop a little bit to get over a fence. And, and then at one time, I thought you could have chickens, but you weren't supposed to have a rooster that crowed, because the crowing is what bothers people, it don't bother me. Now, really, truly, the crowing don't bother me.
Does me at five AM.
Oh, well, I'm up anyway, it don't bother me, but, I, I do understand, and you are in city limits, and that is the rule. It's the rule. So, uh, I, I do think that, that this needs to be enforced.
Chief, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do with this?
These goats.
Confiscate these goats, where you gonna put them?
They're gonna go down to the dog pound with Jess.
They've got five days to pick them up, so, somebody gotta watch them.
Hey, we can put them out there on the solar farm, let them eat their grass.
First be lying, or what, we have the fourth be lying.
You have a jail cell over there to lock them up here?
The thing is, is right now, somebody was complaining about some horses smelling, and the deal is, it ain't even hot yet.
That's right.
And when it starts getting hot, and you've got your kids out in the yard.
Well, it's my, it's my understanding that the Kaiser's horses that were there originally were grandfathered in, but when they were gone, there was.
That was my thought on it too.
That was my understanding years ago.
I don't know.
But, I think these are some new horses that I think belong to the grandkids.
Like it is that they would be.
I just thought it was unless that property sells, whatever the ordinance was, for them, that's what it stays until that property sells, that's just what I thought that would.
I sure don't.
Until it changes owners.
That's not good next to the school.
No, and it smells.
Well, next to the school cafeteria.
In the ordinance, it's that it talks about the smell becoming illusions.
Yeah.
I think at one time, when they had them out, I think they took up some kind of a drag and drug everything, tried to keep it down the best they could, but it still got bad.
We take mine and kill its mail.
Yep.
Will it kill the horses?
No.
No.
Alright, so I wanna table this and discuss later what approach we need to take, or?
Well, I think, just wouldn't it be proper to mail them a letter, you know, and with a copy of this particular item, or the ordinance? Mail it, and give them a fair opportunity, you know, to, you know, change things up, get rid of the animals, whatever.
Yeah, man, I don't, I don't wanna go in and just start fine.
No.
No, no.
Yeah, give them, that's fine.
I just make a motion.
You put this on the page? Both pages?
Yeah, that's on the thing.
What, what did you say, Michael?
Uh, unenclosed lot, there's a, uh, three one zero one, running at large prohibited. The end of that paragraph says, or unenclosed lot within, within the corporate limits.
You're saying, well, you have that, you have to have a fenced in yard.
Yeah, but you go down.
The ones nearest my, uh, dwelling is, they're all chained up and stuff, but they're nothing enclosed, the whole yard's not enclosed, the dogs are in pens. But the, and, and the animals are in pens, they just get out.
So I'll say, y'all say we're just gonna send them a letter with the, with this?
Yes.
If you have somebody in mind, you need to get that person's, uh, name to bed, so that she can make the letter and send it with this stuff, and then she's gonna put the.
You've got chickens in your yard though.
No, across the street. And some goats and some.
I give them a fair opportunity to show up next meeting.
So what we're gonna do, send letters to the ones that's got the animals.
Registered letters.
Registered letters, that way we know they got it.
They can come to the next meeting and discuss.
Yeah.
So we're gonna move, first, basically, table that. Okay. Now, here comes another, discuss vicious dog ordinance. Don't think we've been enforced, well, I know we have been enforced. Has anybody done anything or gone since, you know, vicious dog ordinance? I mean, had nothing been done. So, we've got that, as well as proposed charges that, that Jess and Beth have come up with. Y'all look over that.
I got some concerns about this, okay? There's, there's one part in here, well, the whole list of the breed of dogs is, there probably should be some more listed. Or, or the language that they changed to like, dogs with vicious tendencies, cause I mean.
Approval could be vicious.
And you have to make her say.
It did make passion ease when a woman was killed by her dogs.
Yeah. Also, in this, uh. In the ordinance, it says, uh, leash and muzzle, and it talks about the confinement of them and whatnot, and how they're to be built.
There is leash law, it's just, okay.
But my thing is, if, if, if we require citizens to do it, then we would have to do it also, right? So we would have to get the kennels down here, put the par, right?
The leashes, the musles, if I have to, if they're have to muzzle, it's only fair that I would have to muzzle. Now, because I know it says something about me holding the dogs until they get the permits, and at that point, you know, that's kind of moving in that municipality aspect. And then, I would have to muzzle that dog myself.
Yeah.
I, I should have come by musles for a dog that's.
Between warnings citations and, and actual citations. We've written well over twenty.
And have they improved, I mean, the same people that you've written?
So, that's, that's what we have, that's what we have, we start out with warnings to everybody, uh, and if it keeps happening, like, we got one that's getting ready to go to court for a third time. Well, actually, second time, they got a written warning, and they had to go to court, and I think, if she end up, uh.
She surrendered the dog.
She surrendered the dog, so she wouldn't have to come back with the.
So when she's going to court for that, is she having to pay court costs?
Yes, yeah.
What about court costs, and hit them with a hefty fine?
You can't, city only allows, max it fifty, fifty dollars.
We can't even do restitution on the fact that she surrendered the dog.
So anything that Jessica's out. Anything Jessica's out, extra, we can't get restitution, we have to decide them in a general session.
Which then, we're not getting any, huh?
Cause I'm this certain dog, I'm out a hundred and fifty bucks, out of your pocket, out of my pocket. Y'all are out seventy-five on it. Cause I had to treat it, medical issues are a bit with me.
Then why is she not being charged with animal cruelty?
I had to treat it, or another should get it. I mean, it was all major medical issues, I still had to treat medical issues.
And then also, the insurance, it says the owner of vicious dog must have, and when applying for a permit, must supply proof of public liability insurance in a minimum amount of fifty thousand dollars per person, and a hundred thousand dollars per appearance, insuring the owner for any personal injuries inflicted by the vicious dog. If they're required to do it, then.
But Michael, most people, I mean, there's on homeowner's policies, there's certain breeds that they will not insure if they have those breeds. But, you know, if they don't tell them, they're not gonna know.
And are, would we be insured, the city, I mean?
Are we liable, you mean?
Right, if, if some, if we, if they go get a vicious dog and take it down there, and it gets on her, and she's down there by herself and can't get it off?
Yeah.
And something happens to her bad, who's liable for that?
City.
Or if a kid goes by, sticks their hand in the cage or something. Well, then, at that point, I actually don't let people in the building without signing a labor statement that, if they stick their hand in there, and if they get bit, that it's on them, not on us.
So are all the dogs in a building?
Yes. I don't let, I don't let people go in unless they sign that labor.
Good.
So that was my only concern is with the ordinance, cause it, like, the, the insurance, and then the muzzle and all that stuff, and then, um, the way the, the, um, structure is supposed to be. You know, if it's mandated to be a certain way for the citizen, it's, I'm assuming it has to be here too, so, I guess, may know more about that, I've never been down there, so.
I know when you get a dog that's like that, euthanize them.
I wait, I wait till the fifth day, because of the whole five day straight, hope. But I mean, even then, it's, you know, it's, that's some scary five days there, cause I'm, you know, I'm taking a chance twice on getting bit, which I mean, you know, the first time I've been bit, well, people laughed, but it's still, I mean, you know. At the same time, though, it is, you know, nerve wracking.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for those of us, uh, I just found out about the meeting earlier this morning, this is my first time here.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you. For those of us like myself that don't necessarily know the brief overview of the ordinance, is it like, just a, like a restricted breed list, or is it like, hey, uh, I think Mr. Michael mentioned, uh, dogs with vicious tendencies? Or is it, like, just kind of, what's a brief overview of the ordinance to do about it?
Uh, it's, like, down here, it says, um.
Renee, let Jess, right quick.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the vicious dogs that there, that is listed on here are pit bulls, um, any pit bull mix, a doberman or doberman mix, and a rottweiler and that mix. But for instance, when it goes into that, um, we have a German shepherd down here that we've had to deal with, that has bit somebody, she would not report it. So that's where I think that that should change into vicious tendencies, because I found this, it's the Montgomery County, they make a list to put it online of their vicious dogs, if any infraction that they've had. And there's, there're shepherds on here, great purities, there's a charpail, two charpaills on here, torties.
It's just got teeth that'll bite.
Yeah. Normally, yeah, chow chows, um, you know, Great Danes are normally pretty gentle, but there was an incident in Tiptonville where one turd, and it tore up its horns.
Right.
So I mean, you know, you're having to look at those aspects, I mean, you know, the, when you have one that's going to come at you, it's, you know.
I mean, there's very few people in this world that are able to, the second a dog decides it wants to hurt you, are able to really do much about it. But, so, does that mean that anything on this list is like banned in the city limits, or?
No.
No, no, we just, what we're wanting is just a permit statement, you've got the dog, and that you've got the qualifications.
And you got it injured.
Our charter says it's insured, that way, if it does get out or bite somebody, there's some liability there.
And so, I don't know that everybody, I mean, like, I don't think you're gonna necessarily have, I'm, I'm gonna go get a pit bull, and I'm gonna bring it downtown, and we're gonna register it.
Nobody's intentionally gonna do it.
No, but once it's cited, then at that point, that has to be imposed. If it gets loose, if there's anything happens, it has to be.
That documentation, like she said, that one county, that city's got to be, where everybody would know where the dog goes.
Right.
I feel like if Jessica picks up a vicious dog, they should get it back unless they can find it out there.
Right, no, I'm with you.
Yeah.
But I think that's what we're trying to do now, is get this done, where people will fill this stuff out, where we know, but everybody's not gonna do it, I mean.
Now, if y'all will look at the section.
I mean, the truthful ones will be truthful, but the other ones.
Also, at that chapter two, um, section three two oh one, it right there says that the dogs have to, they're supposed to be registered, like, every dog is supposed to be registered.
How'd they know?
See, the reason I ask is like, so I work for the railway, and I adopted two dogs that I've just found out on tracks, and they're both high and fifty seven, so they're a mix of anything and everything, I mean, so. It's like, I've never had a DNA test done on them, I don't know which is a mix of blood or whatever, and, and it's one of those things, it's like.
Do you have a fenced in yard?
Yes, ma'am.
You're, you're just fine.
Just as long as you don't.
And if it gets out and tries to attack somebody, then we'll address that, but until then, you're fine.
But them two, the only thing they're gonna do is lick you the hell out of them. They're both babies, you talk to them hard, and they.
I do think we need to post that.
I would say, my suggestion would be run it in the banner, and also post it on the website, Facebook page.
Because, and then, again, with the permit though, I would like to actually take that one step farther, and they have to provide a picture of that dog.
I agree, because anybody, you can switch tags on them and say you've registered them.
And I feel like that way, City Hall has a copy, and I should be allowed to have a copy, cause, you know, when I go on calls, you know, they're closed, how am I gonna know if that dog had a permit or not? And I think that registering them would be a good thing for us to look into, on the simple fact of, there's been dogs that I've picked up, and I post them on Facebook, but if you don't have Facebook. there's been dogs that I've picked up and I post them on Facebook, but if you don't have Facebook, how are you gonna know I have your dog?
Right.
And they just, and I've had people register and just tell us, you know, I can go through a list and be like, okay, this is a husky, it's a male. These are the people with the husky that's a male and, you know, call them, pay us your dog.
Process of elimination.
Yeah.
I have another question, um, when you get the permit. Say, say you have to pick up a vicious dog and you get the, you give them the paperwork for the permit and they turn it in. Do you have to go out and make sure that they have the structures they, that's required and everything?
Yes.
But, okay, what happens if she goes out there and they don't?
She's gonna, he's gonna, she's gonna call the police and we're outside or a phone.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we run it in the banner and give everybody opportunity to, to change and comply with their stuff, and that's a different story.
As well as I say, give them like time to get their structure.
Give them a deadline. Yeah, I mean, everything we're doing is not just trying to immediately start finding them.
When they put, when they put, uh, this one into place, they did give a thirty debt. And I mean, I think that's reasonable and fair.
Yes.
But my only also issue is, if they don't have everything, I have to turn around and go back out there. Am I only get paid for ten dollars for going out there, the one time, or should we make them, you know, be based at like a twenty dollar? But if I have to come out there multiple times, the cost of your permit will raise.
I know, I agree with that.
Pay, yeah, pay again. Every time.
You definitely need to pay every time.
It just needs to be restructured on this part.
I sort of say we need to.
The ordinance, I mean, the ordinance is very outdated.
Right.
Right.
So, so we're gonna run it in the banner and give everybody time to, and then put on Facebook page.
Yes.
And then restructure that, sounds good.
Yeah, because we don't need to be out there, they, that charge needs to be passed on to them.
Now, the ten dollars that the city would make on that, my question is, is that going into general funds, or is that gonna go back into the budget of the pound? To kind of help offset the costs of everything?
I'd say, I'd go, I'd put it in the pound fund account.
And, you know, I'm, I'm over pushed because the air conditioner broke, you know, the fence, the kennel had to get fixed and.
All right, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Higher cemetery caretakers, we only had one applicant, Tim Watkins. Uh, now Mr. Daniel said he's only gonna do it a year.
Right.
Tim has been working with Mr. Daniel, I think, learning the ropes.
Are you happy with it, Tim? Are you happy with doing it?
Yeah, it's gonna have to have a lot of improvements on it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody's gonna be sorry guys, keeping up with us all these years.
When you say improvements, what are you talking about, Tim?
About app wise and all that.
Map wise and everything?
And every, every life and everything that needs to be on the computer, so they can be on paper.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Paper trail's good, but computers sometimes better.
Yep.
Well, I, I make motions to hire Tim.
Motion by Renee, all thirty by Mr. Nice. Roll call.
You want that responsibility of shopping it up, boy, you got it.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And Troy?
Yes.
That's what we're all here for, to change messages, that's what we're all here for.
All right, next gentleman on the agenda is Mr. Tracy Fernley with USG Water Solutions. He and I had a conversation, you know, trying to get this grant for these regular water meters. He and Miss Jeanne Kew with T L M got together and he turned in his recommended meters and his system. So he brought me a solution the other day about doing a pilot program. Donnie's already bought twenty residential meters and one or two commercial. For five thousand dollars, that'll get those installed, put the software on the ladies' computers at the office. And start getting acquainted with it, which my big concern was with Miss Jeanne is I wanna make sure she was gonna use his equipment if we get this grant, cause I didn't wanna pay that and turn around and go sell somebody else's equipment and waste that money.
Yeah.
So they got together and that's what she turned in was his proposal. So now we're just, it's in a waiting limbo if we get the grant or not. But he's willing to do that pilot program, which.
Yeah, that's, it's a good idea, yeah.
And he's, he's here to explain if anybody, he explained it a lot better than I can, but if anybody's got any questions for him.
I guess these are, each meter's a red by satellite?
Cellular, cellular signal, four band, cellular signal, that's right. So, as a company, we have painted, maintained y'all's water tanks years and years and years, so this, that's how we have the relationship with y'all. This is an asset management related approach, just like we do your water tanks. We, we don't sell one particular meter, we look at every meter, we look at every system, everyone communicates. And we've done a propagation study through, uh, your clerk and, and Donnie and Jackie before that, to see what would be the best solution for y'all. And so we put that together and explained that to the engineer, but it gives you a chance for a fairly very low cost to get in and start using it. You needed, you needed new meters anyway, so you got, you got you the best meters that were there available to you that's up to date. Would add this communication system to those equipment twenty places around, so now you could experience that, it works everywhere within the range. It could be outside the city, inside the city.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing to come with that, for those who get one, would be a, a, a portal so that they can see the usage by the hour of their own system. So if you had a complaint or something like that, you could put it there in that location. Um, new meters are accurate, um, so, so, uh, and they, they're timely in terms of how they. This would, this would give you everything you need and installed and programmed and set up so that they could use it in the clerk's office as well as all the training for a year, give you the experience.
I know this is fairly new technology of, of cost of life expectancy on these meters.
So. Our systems guarantee everything for fifteen years, no questions asked. A lot of manufacturers have pro-rations after a certain period of time, but the way we do it is we, we install it and then we maintain it and monitor it. And we host it just like you can add to your maintenance on your tank, if you go with the full program, you could have a similar situation. Instead of coming once a year to paint or inspect your tank, it'd be here every ninety days to check anything. If the, if the rate of read goes below ninety, ninety percent, we bring trucks over to that. But I have a system like this in Covington for water and gas, I've had it around almost six years. And my guys are there all the time, so to add y'all to that, it was fairly incremental. They're here close anyway.
Uh, we've just been told, you know, even before this board came on board, that some of the meters, you know, it's the same, it goes, you know, it's not built like this. You know, and they've had some issues with some of the meters, but that's why I was asking, that's all.
It's, it's a great question, and look, four or five years ago, there were systems were put in that were high, high value rate. But they were sold by a manufacturer and supported by nobody. In this case, we look at who's got what's out there, we find the best of that. And when I say we, so people behind me are thirty, forty years in the business, my line of manager is a P E engineer that worked for that team for years and years and years. He's not even recommending that thing to me, in this case, for example. We look at what's really the best out there, cost wise as well as accuracy wise for, you know, this location. You know, we have about fifty of these systems around the country now.
What powers are?
It's a cellular, it's a cellular endpoint with a, with a solar panel on top of it. That solar panel generates, uh, uh, with eight minutes of sunlight a day, it, it loads a capacitor, that capacitor will run it. Um, and there's a battery inside of that.
Okay.
And we, those actually have a twenty year warranty.
Solar panels at the top of the meter base.
Solar panel is just a, it's a little circular deal that penetrates lit, and then there's a solar panel right on top of that.
It's where the truck tires in.
Well, and it's, and it, and it, and we screw that down tight on the lid.
Right. I guess during a glitch, power failure, whatever, you know, cell service, loss of cell service, I guess, it'll go back out and find it again, or?
So, that's right, every time, if it were up to lose it, it's, it's got four bands, so if you lost AT and T, it could be Verizon or, or um, T-Mobile and USA. So any of those. The other thing is LTEM, which is the most reliable, it's not your average cell signal, we're using on our phones for machines. And it's what purchase sponsors use. So if you lose power on anything, cell is the very first thing that comes back up. Um, there are other, there are systems that have the radio frequency, but then they require radios or repeaters, that kind of stuff. And so looking at your system as far as it goes out, that would make sense. And we literally look at everything that's available and say what would work best for y'all.
Yes, sir.
Um, so your, uh, solar panels on top of the.
Yeah, it's about something like that.
What about when people hit with mowers, or in my case, where my box is right in the middle of my concrete driveway?
So their traffic rated, um, and they don't sit up but, you know, quarter of an inch.
So I, if I drive across it, it doesn't hurt?
They'll get flush on that meter box.
Yeah, you're, yeah, and, and in the event that, you know, there was a problem, they can be moved to another location. The meter transmitter can be moved to another location, it actually could be inside the box, you get the best benefit of the solar panel.
Okay.
Yeah.
What do you do? At my house, in my situation, my, my yard, the meter lid floats off the top of the box all the time because my meters sort of sit right in the middle of a swale or ditch, so to speak. How do they operate if they get really wet?
Water's not a problem, they're completely sealed, uh, and it may be that we work with Donnie and find the locking later.
We may have to move mine back to higher ground.
Yeah, they, and, and there's some other options.
Donnie.
Yeah, so, so there are several options, whether these are locking later, like you said, we locate to a different location.
Cause this is the day before yesterday, or my meter's draining into the water.
Our guys have a really good line here.
Well, the other big advantage y'all is that, that you can be accurately read on the exact same day every month. Doesn't matter if it's raining, snowing, leaking, if you're chasing dogs, or if you're packing grass, or whatever else is going on. Your clerk or Donnie can read those meters and he gets that, show that to you, patients if there's issues, which is great, you know. Somebody's got a problem with high water bill, instead of reading the meters, writing the information down, sending out the note, and now it's sending somebody mad. You can within a day or two, um, see, hey, I've got high usage, or you've got high usage, and notify, you know, your citizens, so.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so you mentioned that it's four band, covers multiple cell services. Uh, does it run off of a particular like three G, four G, five G?
It's LTE, it's, it's, it's what they call LTEM is the band.
Okay, uh, the reason I ask is, uh, recently at work, we had a cell service device, uh, drive cameras for company vehicles and everything. And they ran particularly off of three G. Well, when they stopped providing three G service and everything's four and five now. Every single camera in the company quit working and they all had to be replaced. They couldn't be upgraded to work off of the new type of cell, like five G now is the, the one. So I was just kind of curious how that would work with the way technology's advancing nowadays. It's like, you say you guarantee them or you warrant them for fifteen years. What if, I was kind of curious, is there a potential for the cell service, uh, industry to outstrip the device?
So it's a great question, and it's, it's a fact of life. Part of what we do, if you go with the full program, is we guarantee a reference, at no cost to you. Um, so that, that's a great thing, but the LTEM band is a really stable band, it only, it's limited access to it. I'm not expert in AT and T or, or cell phones, three G literally means third generation, four G only means fourth generation. It doesn't get into the technical about how much power is being driven or how it's operating, but you're right, cell companies do not support older versions, and now you're, you've got liability for that, but, but that's not something that will affect y'all. And if it does, they'll be on that stuff, but. Good question.
That's part of, that's part of the reason I'd like to go with it, because they're doing pretty much the best.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I can't argue with that at all.
Won't be no, no question whether the meters are getting read or not, you know.
Right.
The biggest thing, go ahead.
I didn't even know that they could do something like that until that happened at work, and then you've got a company of forty thousand employees, but all of a sudden every single vehicle in the truck, in the company had to have renewed one to put into it.
And they've been taking care of our water cars forever, and look, look at them, that, that, what, they, like X was terrible. They, they always get the best scores you get every year.
Can't beat that with a beef and stick.
No.
Also, just to reiterate, this money that we're gonna spend just to do this would, would come out of the COVID money, more likely. But to Donnie's defense, uh, was it a hundred and nine thousand?
Yeah.
We were, we were, no, the water department is now showing a hundred and nine, a hundred and nine thousand plus, cause that's taking care of leaks and, you know, getting some stuff fixed. We're kind of in positive now.
Yeah, it's getting towards the top. But these meters are helping a whole lot on our money, a whole lot.
How soon do you plan to pilot the program? And what is that process of selection for the pilot? And is there a citizen's responsibility during the pilot process?
Well, I think it'll be up to y'all where, where you put them, um, but, but you're probably talking less than sixty days to have it. You already have the meters, so it'll be ordering the, uh, software and getting it up and running and, and then getting the endpoints installed. Shipped in and installed for about sixty days, and then it'll be, you know, we like to see decision makers be at their house, we don't wanna be proactive about, but our goal is to, to represent the system everywhere that it might be used, so like some, somebody's got way out. We did this recently in North Mississippi, we, they, they tried to find the worst place possible to put them to verify that it would work, right? And then a couple of places, board members' houses, so you could, there's board members that may be on a utility committee, you could have the experience of using it. So you, you know, were familiar with how it works. So with twenty and a large meter, you get a good representation of, of what you could expect. Before spending, you know, the, the big amount, might just a little about, get about.
Yeah, they can actually put them at y'all's houses and let y'all see, you know, what, y'all can even.
I don't know if y'all wanna see mine or not.
I, I've talked to some in Tiptonville and, uh, they said it was high, once they got on theirs and started getting their regular water bill, it went up. But I mean, I know we've got a lot of meters, uh, talking to Donnie and Mr. Kerry Calhoun, that's one point five million plus gallons. And they're supposed to be thrown away and replaced.
Seven to ten years a million gallons, you should be looking to replace them.
Do we have to use that COVID money by the January, June thirtieth?
About, up next year.
June thirtieth?
Yeah.
Like this year?
Yeah, I mean, this year, excuse me, is this?
Okay, alright.
Right.
June thirtieth, you need to be there.
I have a question, these, these meters, are they, um, is the instrumentation internal? So like if, if, uh, the million gallons, could, could the electrical components be? Let me figure out how to say it. When you, uh, when you go to replace, like if we need to replace one, do we have to buy the, at cost, the whole assembly, or is it?
So, so that's another question, and part of the market is some distributors want to see the top of the meter and not the bottom. The top of the meter is how it communicates, the bottom of the meter is what measures. So the bottom of the meter is what wears out, sometimes the top or the battery, the communications fails. But you want it to be accurate, so you want the measurement to be right, just like you want the communication to be right. And the truth of the matter is, most new meters, the head costs as much as a brand new meter. So it makes sense to put a whole new meter in that, in that place, if that answers your question. The other, the other thing, that way you're accurately charged with that one. So, um, if you go on the full program for fifteen years, you don't have to worry about it. If it's more than a million gallons and we don't see it's used right, we replace it in that, you know, in that hosting arrangement. So it's not an additional cost to the city. If you use it to drive too fast, you don't run out of leads or whatever on a meter, that, those meters are actually in the ground and function for the full fifteen years.
I like the fact that the maintenance is with it. Yes, 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 the experts.
That's what I told Miss Jeanne when I talked to her, you know, we've got a, we've got a working relationship with Mr. Tracy's company, and I mean, that means a lot. You get somebody else in here and you got two different things going.
Two different opinions.
And, and I think that's one of the things that failed in the past, is you bought this system, but somebody else is running the communications and somebody else is running the warranty on it. And, and you can get fingerprinted, but you still get a meter read, so you gotta send somebody out live, so this case, anything that fails for any reason.
Just one contact.
One go to person.
One contact.
There you go.
The major, these meters, like we're wanting to have sign that it tells them from the meter, we're there, that's something wrong.
That's, we also monitor your system twenty-four seven.
If there's a leak or anything.
We send you alerts, uh, ahead of us coming, um, so we can say, hey, we're seeing a problem here.
Donnie, what about the meters, like my meter? It's broke, it's cracked, it's.
The top of it, okay, yeah, that's, that'd be, that'd be one of the first ones that gets changed. We, we've got so many, I mean, we've got a bunch of them that way, I've got a whole stack of pictures.
With the dirt and the leaves and everything gets in because it's.
Yeah, and they get, they get moisture in them, in the top of them.
Yeah.
And so when they're reading them, sometimes they have to take a little lighter torch like thing and heat them. And that gets the moisture out. And so when they're reading them, sometimes they have to take a little lighter torch like thing and heat them, and that gets the moisture out, where you can see it. But if they do it too much, it cracks it and busts it, and then it starts getting dirt in it, and then before you know it, it ain't no good. So, yeah, you'd be one of the first ones to get replaced.
I was just wondering.
So, so the other thing is, we're gonna come in with your guys and install the meters that haven't been installed, and install the programming and the software, and then do the train for them as well as y'all. And it could be on Donnie's, it could be on whoever, you know, decision makers, they can have access to, to that information mobilely as well as on your laptop.
What's the price for a meter?
These meters were a hundred and forty-five dollars a piece, or up to sign up meters. It's about a hundred thousand less than you could buy one anywhere. Can't you buy that one from the distributor's I got. I work for a company that managed seven million endpoints, and we have a direct relationship with every manufacturer. We don't go through the local district.
Yeah, I thought so too, I thought that's, I think that's very reasonable for what it does.
You gotta have a little over nine hundred.
Yeah, and really the bigger meters is our, is, is the big, you know.
Martial meters, larger calls, which is not many of those.
No, we don't have it, me, yeah, not, it means a bigger.
Uh, just a simple question, will this affect the workforce of the water department?
Yeah, it'll help a lot.
It'll help, it'll, it'll be doing other things.
I got other things they could be doing.
We can be fixing leaks instead of reading meters. It takes them almost a week now, if the weather is perfect, it takes almost a week for them to read them.
Maybe it's
This would be, we wouldn't even have to read them, because it would take one day.
Alright, so I guess the question is, y'all want to proceed with the pilot program?
I make a motion, Chris.
No, I'll second one.
Motion by Mr. Renee, second by Michael and Ruth.
Ruth, both of us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Put, put it down.
Renee, motion.
Michael, third, okay.
Of course.
It looks so much alike.
Alright, motion passed, uh.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a real come up.
She tells you, get any updates, of course.
Uh, we lost Hunter Thomas, first day at the academy, he quit. We hired a guy from Dyersburg, uh, gave him a start date, a week later he called and backed out, said he couldn't do the paint, so we're back to square one.
Still got three.
That's right.
We done? Yeah.
I don't know.
Renee made the motion.
I made the motion, okay.
Mr. Neese seconded it.
Everybody said yes.
And everybody, everybody voted yes. I, I got you, I got you down, I'm helping you out.
Thank you, I was like, I missed him one year.
Donnie, you got any updates?
Oh, I'm gonna use anything.
Well, one, one thing we did do is they put a flower bin over there on Kimberly Cove, that helped the water backing up in two houses.
But now finding out we got more.
But we got more down the road, it's still gonna have to have some of those, uh,
One-way.
One-way flapper, where you know, color.
It's a backflow, it's, it's like a water backflow.
And I would like to give kudos to Donnie and his crew. I mean, they were out there the first time during the rain.
Yes.
Yes.
They got it taken care of this time, and, uh, and it had, it did have light, water was higher this time than it was before, and, uh, nobody had an issue.
I think if we get that ditch on the west side of the rebel tracks north, get it cleaned out, I think that's gonna relieve a lot more pressure. But we're getting there, I mean, it's just
But it's working.
Right.
And, uh, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Darryl?
They're doing good, we need the backwater to get down, we'll get the, we'll get some cold mix, get some new pipelines up there, right now they're underwater.
He never did call me back today, so they're still down.
I think they're only, they only, you know, they get that cold mix a couple days a week. I think it's Thursday and Friday.
Right now, they're underwater.
Yeah, yeah, laying bed shake.
Okay, so that's, that's gonna be a little bit. Uh, I do want to bring up one thing, it's not only general, on other business, is about, uh, the merit property up there. We need to decide what we're gonna do, uh, to sell that property to the adjacent landowners. Now, I think it's, or we just think you keep waiting.
No, you need to get it going.
I've got copies, if anybody wants a copy to look at anything.
Well, you know, when we started this project, uh, a year and a half ago, um, the whole thing was that we were, we would be able to buy that, have access to it, fix the things on the highway that needed to be fixed, so that businesses could come in there, that property could be sold and done well with, and, and it would help some of our sewage problems, and, um, we got the, we got the land, we got, uh, but our goal was to sell it, if, if they wanted to, to the landowners that own the present property, and they could buy back their footage in the back with the easement left of twenty-five foot for us.
You'll take twenty-five foot.
We're gonna take twenty-five foot, and then they, um,
Got like fifty foot of the adjacent landowners.
Right, for them to put park in or whatever they want to put back there. And, um, and then the, the, and the goal was for us to be able to make our money back. And, um, we've got figures here that, that constitute that, and I I make a motion that we, uh, go with it. I don't know what, what you need to explain more, I mean, if anybody wants to know more, I'm not trying to skirt around that.
Well, I mean, I, I, if anybody wants to look at this, yes, sir.
We've made the deal up there, we bought the land at all expense, that was along with buying the land, we do that and square footage, we don't lose no money. That was what was
That's exactly what was saying.
That's how
We're not gonna pay for this or that, whoever buys, you accept that.
That's, that's, that's how I got it.
Not very much money.
Right.
And so that's what the proposal was.
Yes.
And that's, that's, that's the same that we're gonna stay with, we're not changing, I mean, it's not No, no, I mean, and, and, you know, it's not fair, after looking at it, to say, all right, we give X for the land, we got all this other, we're not gonna collect back. That's, that's not right. City needs to be made whole of what they speak on everything, and that's kind, I mean, we done it fair, uh,
According to
According to the
Square footage.
Square footage. Everybody's paying, I guess, you'd say the same price per square foot, one just get more than the other. But now, I think what you're also saying was the person that's adjacent to it has the opportunity to buy, but nobody can buy any other, it's, say, if another property owner won't theirs, nobody else can buy that, the city's gonna retain it, right?
Well, I, I, yeah, I would've gotten there.
I'm pretty sure nobody's gonna buy there, because I done had questions from everybody, except for Chris Tippett.
Nobody can buy that land, one person can up that.
No, 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 what I'm saying is, if you got a property owner that don't want theirs.
That's why we'll make sure
Yeah, no, no, no.
It just stays with the city. If somebody don't want to buy theirs, then it stays at the city.
Right.
And all of these people have been approaching, talking.
Well, uh, Jolie, Brad, and Mr. Doug was here last meeting, I mean, they're ready, they're ready to do, they're ready to do the deal. We just didn't have a price or how we wanted to do it, so now we got a price. We just gotta make sure we got everything like we want it, and then we'll proceed. I, I know everybody wants theirs, I've not talked to Chris Tippett, Ronnie Capps told me he wanted his behind Mr. Ronald's place. I'm sure Sweet Jewel and, you know, Market.
I think everybody's gonna walk
Well, but, yeah, that'd be crazy not to do it. And the other thing of that is, is, I mean, y'all can chip in here, but the twenty-five foot right away, I don't have a issue if that landowner wants to gravel it, or if they want paper. They just need to understand, if we got a leak, we're gonna dig it up. Right. And, and fix our problem, and when we're not gonna fix it back, we'll put gravel back in it, but we're not gonna pave it back. But I mean, that'll still give them seventy-five feet if they wanted to use that seventy-five feet, but they need to understand that twenty-five is the cities.
Twenty-five gonna be in the front or back?
Be in the back. Yeah, I mean, the tension's moving the sewer, the water, and the gas all in the back.
That's gonna be like their exit from that land.
That's right.
Who's that gonna take?
Well, that's coming. We, we got, we got two or three other things we gotta get before we get there. Uh, if we had about seven hundred days in a year and about forty-eight hours in a day, we might be able to get a lot more cost.
By eight a.m., one bite at a time.
That's right. So, I'll second.
I make a motion to go with the blue, uh, is that right, the blue color? Right, okay, no, okay.
The yellow.
The yellow, okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at it wrong.
Nice motion.
First second, Michael.
Michael second, Bruce is third, is that?
I answered that, yes, yes.
Alright.
Oh, yes.
It's dry.
Yes.
Straighten Mr. Goodman then.
And to answer your question, Roger, we got a deal from T L M. This is the lagoon project that we've got, it's gotta be fixed first, we're on the state's not so good list, and, uh, so talking to Ms. Ginny, we had one point, two or three million dollars to do the lagoon plus the highway.
Water plant first.
And, well, yeah, the water plant. So the water plant's gonna get done first, so what we're gonna do is we're just gonna do the yellow in this, this time, to try to make the money stretch and get the highway done as well. So basically what they're gonna do is there's four yellow dots here, which is four manholes, that they're gonna raise up and seal them to where the floodwater does not get in them. And, and I and I, whatever that means.
Yeah, for trucks, yeah.
So that, that'll get us off their list, and then we'll come back, we got any money later, and check this pipe. They, they seem to think, and Donnie seems to think, there's nothing wrong with this pipe on Depot Street. So that was probably money we was just gonna spend. But our other thing we're trying to do is we're trying to get some money put together, get him a camera system where we can start going down into these sewers and see what problems we do have before we just start spending money that is unnecessary. I, I mean, it won't ever go away, you're always gonna have it.
Yeah, yeah, I hope, I'm, I'm just glad we figured out a lagoon, you know. Instead of having to have a plant, you know, uh, changing the subject, uh, what about the litigation? When I was the mayor, is it still, uh, in litigation out there at the lagoon, or can you give us ideas on that, or we in limbo just there?
I'll tell you what Ms. Christine says. Just let a dead dog lie, and eventually it'll stay on the docket so long the judge will say, let's clear this docket off and it's gone.
Yeah, we're still, we're still under direct order.
But, yeah, that's, I mean, it's still on there, but nobody, there's been nothing passed, and that's what she told me last time we talked, well, actually, after I got elected and went and talked to her, asked her all those questions, that's what she said, just if you leave it alone, it's, it'll kind of go away. Does anybody, anybody need to, any kind of input from citizens? Yes, sir.
I'm gonna make you go buy a house, maybe when you leave.
Uh-oh.
I gotta tell, I'm making, gotta get rid of the chihuahua. They go from you.
No, no, you're on the home. And we have a motion to, George.
I make a motion, we go to the house.
Motion by Bruce, second by Renee, all in favor, say aye.
There's a zoning board, Nate.